Let's call the City and Marine City Commission meeting to order. Marine City Fire Hall. Regular meeting Thursday, May 16, 2019, 7:00 p.m. Could we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And please let's stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner McCammon.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
All right, let's move on to Communications. Need a motion to receive and file the departmental activity reports, Marine City Area Run Report, Pension Board Meeting Minutes, and the Pension Board Retirement Healthcare Minutes.
Make a motion to receive and file Communications A through D as presented.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on Communications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This is the time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed up upon as necessary. Anyone like to speak? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda adding item number 8D, special event permit for the flower sale for the garden club?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support. Questions or concerns on the agenda?
Bless you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Next, moving on to approval of multiple minutes. The Commission Budget Workshop on April 23rd, the City Commission Budget Workshop April 24th, City Commission Special Meeting April 24th, City Commission Closed Session Minutes, or Session April 24th, City Commission Regular Meeting May 2nd, and City Commission Closed Session Minutes, May 2nd.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve business license for the Dry Dock Store, Inc., EHE Recycling, Bryce Fitness, their new location, and a special event permit for the Marine City Flower Sale.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing for the 2019-2020 budget. Notice is hereby given that the Marine City Commission will conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed 2019-2020 budget. Please limit your comments to five minutes. The public hearing has now been declared open at 7:05. Anyone like to speak on the budget? All right. With hearing no takers, we're going to close the public hearing at 7:06. All right, next, moving on to unfinished business. We have the Council on Aging Washington Life Center.
This item was before you at the last meeting. It is a request for support for their senior center. The issue at hand from the last meeting and why we tabled it was because we were to be finding out if any other communities have been providing funds to Council on Aging. We did hear back from them, and about half of the eight communities that they sent it out to do contribute funds. So at this point, it would really be up to you if you choose to contribute or not.
We've contributed in the past?
Mm-hmm.
How much are they asking? It doesn't say on here.
Well, we usually do 500, isn't it? Isn't that the normal, what we've done in the past?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Are the other communities doing $500? That's the set amount?
You know, we didn't get amounts or anything from them. We just wanted to find out who contributed. It's really up to you, any amount, I'm sure they'll be happy with.
I'd like to make a motion to actually contribute to 500.
Second.
Any questions or concerns on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
All right, moving on to board appointment for the Library Board. And I believe we had two. Is that one that I need to appoint, or is that one that's?
I think anybody can make a motion on this one. Any of the members?
I make a motion to appoint Louise Butteau.
Motion support. Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on for the second reading of the Handbill Ordinance Number 2019-006. Need to get a motion to have the.
I move that we approve the Resolution Number 013-2019. Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance Number 2019-006 for its second reading and adoption.
Motion support. Any questions or concerns on it? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we just got to follow up with it and make sure that they're going to be informed on this, aren't they?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Resolution Number 13-2019, 2019-2020 Fiscal Year Budget.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 013-2019 Fiscal Year Budget for 2019-2020.
Motion support. Any questions on the budget? Yes, Lisa.
What's going to happen now? I see we were rejected for the 19-year for the street funds, the grant. Are you going to?
Yeah, so there'll eventually be a budget amendment for that that will reduce the revenue and the expenses in the even amount, and then we will have to select whatever roads it is that we're going to do next.
How much was that one for?
The grant? It would have been matching, or I'm sorry, it wouldn't have been matching. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it was about half.
All right. So you haven't worked on what you're going to do now?
No.
I mean, then there is a chance next year that you still could apply.
So the, my understanding is, is that the 2020 funding is going to be announced in June. So we have one more kind of opportunity that it could be still in the budget.
Okay.
So that would, that's why I don't want to take it out right now, because if we get funding for 2020, that could fall in the 1920 budget year.
We could do it toward the end of next year's budget.
Right.
Do we have to reapply, or is it just, or to let them know, or we don't know?
My understanding from the email that I got is that they're going to make the announcement for the 2020 in June, and it does not look like we would need to reapply. They're going from the pool of candidates that they already got for the 1920 year.
Okay. Any other questions for the budget? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
All right, moving on to the fee schedule. Need a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve the fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Any questions on the fee schedule? Yes, Lisa.
All right. I know in some cases, we're not always competitive with some of these compared to other communities. I mean, how are you basing some of these figures?
Susan's always looking at neighboring communities, checking to see what they're doing, checking to see what the state's doing, and adjusting it accordingly.
Okay, because I know like even on roof permits, we're pretty high compared to everybody else in the area.
Yeah, and roof permits was actually something that we're changing this year because based on a lot of the construction costs, it would have been even more expensive than what we have proposed on the fee schedule here for most people.
So it would be more because of the increased cost of the roofing materials, or?
So as it stands right now, a roof permit is based on the construction costs, and what we're doing is just going to a flat rate.
But the construction cost, it would have been higher on a lot of the permit.
Because of the cost of the roof, they're more expensive.
Because I know at one time, roof permits were fairly reasonable, and then all of a sudden, boom.
Yeah.
Everybody was getting hit by it, and I mean.
This will level it out.
Yeah, because we want to encourage them to fix it, not kill them with a permit.
Right.
Any other questions on the fee schedule? Hearing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
All right, moving on to Ordinance Number 2019-007, the water and sewer rates, first reading introduction.
I move we approve Ordinance Number 2019-007 Water and Sewer Rates for First Reading and Introduction.
Yes, Lisa.
What's the current rates? I mean, it'd be nice if they would put the current rate versus the new rate.
So the water usage, was it 709? It'll be going up to 720. And the sewer usage, was it 562, and will be going up to 570?
And she just based that on inflation this year?
Yep, that 1.5% that we were talking about when we were in the budget.
Any other questions on the water sewer rates? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
All right, and then now we're moving on to Ordinance Number 2019-008, Community Economic Development Board Ordinance First Reading.
I'll move we enter Ordinance Number 2019-008 Community Economic Development Board Ordinance as a first reading introduction.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on it? Yes.
Okay, so somebody brought to my attention, they wanted to make sure, since our board's a little different than it used to be, we have a lot of business people on the board. A couple of things they want, they were concerned about was that you have a commission member that could be a business owner and a member of the, and a business owner, and then we have two residents which, I suppose.
Could be business.
Could be business owners. So the question they were bringing to me is, they want to make sure that we just don't fill this up with, no offense to all the business owners, but they just wanted to make sure that it was a fair game for everybody, so.
Of course, we would do that.
And that would be something, when you get applications for those at-large residents, that you could take that into consideration when you vote.
You do have that screening process.
And we probably won't have a choice on who we get to pick.
Right.
Because we won't have enough.
Well, I agree. I just.
It's just another board that we're going to have a heck of a time trying to fill.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've still got openings on three other boards right now.
Yeah.
So I don't see the use in starting up another board.
Well, this board doesn't really have a whole lot of power either, though.
Even harder to fill that kind of board.
Maybe, maybe not.
Time will tell.
I guess you throw it out there and see.
Yeah.
I just said I'd bring up that issue, so.
Any other questions on it?
So if you started the board and it didn't fill, did you dissolve it?
Yeah, you could repeal the ordinance.
Just repeal the ordinance. But this, remember, this was an outgrowth of the winding down of the Tifa Subcommittee and the recommendation. There was quite a bit of enthusiasm to have this type of a board, so if it doesn't pan out, I think you've done your role of following the recommendation of the Subcommittee, and so be it. But if it does pan out, it could be a very nice board.
I think that we need to add something in here about, especially at the onset of it all. If it does go, and it's, and everyone's very enthusiastic about this, which I think would happen, hiring a professional planner or a professional firm, just to get it started, just to give us direction, so.
I think we had the planner come in, didn't we, and the Subcommittee?
Yeah.
We had that. But yeah, basically, we're just trying to find projects, you know, like kayak launches and everything else. That's what this board would be trying to do, is put that all together.
And the, the board has the opportunity that you can budget funds for this board. So if you got into the board, we got people appointed, and they were kind of floundering, that's something that you could potentially budget money to say, have the county or some other professional planner come and help give the board a little bit of direction and get things going.
Or if the board came up with a decent idea that this board supported, this board could say, let's engage a professional to help move this along.
Because I can see this going much deeper than just, you know, some of the smaller things that we'd like to do. You know, there's a, I think it could be much bigger, so.
Agree.
Yeah.
Lots of potential.
Lot of potential.
Any other questions on it, or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabash?
No.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yeah.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, moving on to meeting cancellation for July 4th.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the July 4th meeting. Yay!
Good idea.
Second.
Lisa, are you going to vote yes on this?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unless we want to talk about it.
Oh, aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to financial business. Disbursements, including payroll, for $288,970.38. Can I get a motion?
I make motions that we approve the total disbursements, including payroll for $288,970.38.
Support.
Questions or concerns on disbursements? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to preliminary financial statement. Need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on the preliminary financial statements? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to City Managers' Report.
Since our last meeting, I've attended Scott St. Planning Commission. We received a FOIA for a lot of information regarding the pension election, and we've been working our way through that. We did kind of find some shortcomings with the election, so we're actually going to redo that election. I just wanted to make you all informed of that. If for some reason it comes to a tie vote again, it will be coming back to the board for clarifying that. As I had mentioned in my email to everyone, we did not get the Category B funding for the roads for '19, so hopefully, keep your fingers crossed, we'll get it for '20. If not, we'll try again for future years. Working tentatively towards a June 11th closing for the property. Still working on doing some of the due diligence, and potentially would have closing documents for you leading up to the June 6th meeting. Today, we received notice that our deputy clerk and DPW assistant, Elizabeth, is leaving. She put in her 30 days' notice. With that, we are taking an opportunity to kind of restructure some of the positions in our office. So I know that Lisa has, Lisa in particular, has been waiting for the policies and procedures, and one of the things in the policies and procedures is the classification wage schedule for that. So I'm going to be working on figuring out who's going to be doing what, and potentially restructuring some of the positions, so I'm going to hold off on that. I have pretty much everything else ready, so what I'll probably do is wind up sending the policy procedure manual out to everyone to at least be able to take a look at and start reviewing, but I think I'm going to have to push that off until the second meeting in June. With the tight timeframe on this, we're probably going to wind up trying to get an ad together next week and out in the papers.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Are the wages that we pay our city workers competitive with other cities in our area?
We have not done a pay study.
Maybe we need to do that to retain these good employees.
We would have to budget for something like that. It's a pretty extensive process, because to be able to compare apples to oranges, you have to look at more than just the dollar amount. It's a lot about getting job descriptions, benefit information, kind of the whole picture. If that's something that we can certainly do that in conjunction with this manual and the wage classifications, I don't know if you want to bring that to a future meeting for discretion?
Probably should.
Is that position a dual position?
Yes. It's a full-time position that's split between DPW and the Clerk's Department right now. Potentially, we might restructure everything. So I've asked each of the department heads affected to provide me information, updated information about all of the job descriptions, and taking a look and seeing what we can potentially fit together, especially with our current office staff, and seeing what we might be able to handle within, and then what we need to pick up that unfortunately they may not be able to cover. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Like I said, it just happened today, so it's a very new thing for us, and we're still kind of working on putting things together. It's definitely developing, so I'll try and have more in the future. Like I said, I'll get the policy and procedure out to everyone. I'll include the current wage classification, so you can at least see what we currently have for some of the new people. You may not be that familiar with that, but everything else, we'll have the markups in it.
Elizabeth is a great employee.
It'll be a big, big hole to fill. There's a lot of different things that she did.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Clerk's Office, working on elections, would go out and assist with some of the field work for DPWs, did the water meter reads, delivered the packets, dealt with cemetery water and sewer billing, so a lot of stuff, and it's going to take some time to train people to bring them up to speed. So we'll get through it, but certainly wish her the best. And then I think that's about it.
Anyone have questions for the City Manager? Lisa.
Since this came up and we briefly talked, but I told them I'd bring it up here, too. The safe routes to school, it seems like a lot of the grassy areas, cement's been left. Some of the people are trying to clean up their own yards left by the construction crews, so I've instructed them to try to contact you and let you know. But some of them even, they had put straw over the top of the cement and the garbage that was underneath it, and they're trying to clean it up, which they shouldn't be doing. And, you know, we should be holding that accountable for finishing that whole job.
Yeah, I've spoken with Mike earlier this week, and one of the final things that you do is go through a punch list.
Yeah.
And that has not been done yet, and those issues would be things that should be reported to Mike, so he can get them on the punch list to make sure they get corrected.
Okay.
Does he still have anything yet to do?
Yes.
There's a lot of things.
Yeah, they're not complete yet.
Anyone else have anything from City Manager? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Commissioner Privilege. Cheryl, you want to start herself?
Yep. This weekend, we are, hopefully if the weather is beautiful, and I'm sure it will be, because the last couple of days have been great. There is a flower sale going on at the, at 300 Broadway, the old historic City Hall. It's Saturday and Sunday, May 18th and 19th, from 9:00 to 5:00. It is the, it's Marine City's 12th Annual Beautification Day, and proceeds go toward the garden club's Marine City Hydrangia Project, Hydrangia Project. So if you can get out there and support, buy some flowers, that would be great. Also, on, I mentioned this before, but I'm just going to, this is our next meeting before this event. So May 29th, which is a Wednesday, I believe, is the first of many kayak and canoe paddles through Blueways of St. Clair. That's the very first one that they're hosting this year. There's many, many. So it starts May 29th. We're meeting at the DNR launch at 5:00 o'clock, so if you're interested in doing any group kayak events, you have to register through Blueways of St. Clair, and it's pretty fun. Tomorrow, Frank Beckman, the voice of 760, will be, WJR will be at the Inn on Water Street from 9:00 a.m. to noon, doing his live broadcast. Any, everyone is welcome to go in and talk to Frank, and business owners and citizens, whoever want to talk to Frank, I'm sure that he's got some open time, and celebrating the one year of the Inn on Water Street. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Merchant?
Wow.
Sorry, did I take?
You took every. I just want to thank everyone who came out last weekend to the Marine City Rotary Flower Sale. It was cold weather, but we did have a lot of people coming and ten, or participate in our fundraiser, so that was really good. And I also want to just mention that, just to keep in mind the Babcheck family again, because Patricia passed away this past weekend, so just keep that family. You've had a lot going on in a short period of time with Bud and now with Patricia passing away, so just keep them in your prayers.
Just to follow it up, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up and bought flowers at for us. It was like, we thought it was going to snow a couple of days. But, that's it.
Now, I just want to remind everybody that now that the weather is getting nicer, we have more people walking our streets and things like that, and so if you're out driving, please be careful. I mean, I can't even tell you how many times we're seeing, because people don't, they don't always cross the crosswalks, so watch them coming out in between cars and things like that, and it's just, we've just got more street, you know, foot traffic right now going on, so please be careful. We had somebody come to us, like brake squealing stop, because somebody came out in between two cars, you know, right out there on Broadway, and the crosswalk wasn't 20 feet from them. So, so just keep an eye out. And also, the same thing goes with people who are out enjoying our community, whether you're walking the neighborhoods or in the business areas or whatever. We have trash cans everywhere. Please use them. Okay? Please use them. Take some pride in what we have in this town, and just use our trash cans, please. cans, please.
The other thing I have is, this Saturday, the Lions are having, Marine City Lions is having a craft show and bake sale at 545 Ward Street from 10 to 3. Come on down and get some good food and see some, a lot of good crafts. That's all I got.
I'd like to remind anyone who has property on the water, the water is going to go up at least five inches at a minimum, and it's going to stay there for a while, so please look at your property, see what you need to do to protect it. So, it's about it, try and be proactive instead of waiting until the water's at your doorstep.
Yeah, that was on one of my things, that, you know, just prepare for the flood, because there's some areas I've been, I took multiple phone calls today asking if we have sandbags right now. Mike does not have sandbags. He's first on the list with emergency management to get sandbags. They're starting to ration them. Before, they tried to give them away and nobody needed them, and they had a warehouse full of them. Now, they're scarce, so. And if you need them, you're going to need to find them quickly, so if you think you're going to need them, get them.
Yeah, they had them today.
And then, anybody wanting special permits, please get them to us a little sooner. If you think you may need a special permit, just call Chris, and she can let you know, let you know if you need to get one put together for us, because we don't mind putting them on for the special events, but it's just nicer if we make our packet nice and clean, and they always hate calling me to ask if they can put it on the agenda, and listen to me complain.
It's a better job of getting word out as well.
Yes. So, and we've got Memorial Day Parade coming up, and we all need to show reverence for those that didn't make it home. It's, we do a great job at celebrating those that have lost their lives for this community, and I really hope everybody else will be able to come out for, it's just a great, great event that they put together, and Jesse White and the rest of the VFW do a great job for us, and police do a great job standing up there with us, even though it's usually hot as blazes in a dark blue uniform, so. Right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
We love sweating in those fancy hats, don't we? But it's a great cause, it's what we need to do, it's something we have to do, so. With that, I'd like to get a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion that we move into a closed session?
Second.
And I forgot to actually say why we're going into closed session. It's for negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement with representatives of the POA. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, roll call, it says it right there.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCammon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.